Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for May 27, 2025. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Have a motion?
Mayor, I move to excuse Councilwoman Garcia.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse Councilwoman Garcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? You'd all please stand. Please remain standing. A little prayer together for tonight, so if you would pray with me. Father, as we gather today for the city council meeting, we seek your guidance and wisdom in our discussions and decisions. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and for the trust placed in us by its citizens. Today, we also pause to remember and honor the brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. On this Memorial Day week, may we reflect on their courage, dedication, and the enduring spirit of service they represent. Let their legacy inspire us to work diligently for the betterment of our city and the well-being of all of its residents. Grant us strength and unity as we strive to build a brighter future for our community. It's your name I pray. Amen. We have an agenda before us. Uh, any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We also have a couple of sets of minutes for the April 28 regular meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Move to approve the April 28 regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the April 28, 2025, meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, thank you. Then we have another set for the May 19 work session.
Move to approve the May 19 work session minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the work session minutes for May 19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing.
Case number PUD 25-2, SSP number one. An application filed by McBride Dale Clarion, 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 1,462 square foot Valvoline instant oil change on 0.65 acres. The property is further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 45 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Do we have an applicant here? Just come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Brent Myers with Casto, 250 Civic Center Drive, Suite 500, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. I'd like to thank council's time this evening. We are here, as a reminder, requesting approval of a specific site plan for Valvoline instant oil change at 3913 Colonel Glenn Highway. As a reminder, council approved the PUD zoning change in concept plan on April 14 of this year. The specific site plan that is before you tonight is consistent with the concept plan that was approved previously with that PUD zoning change. Again, as a reminder, we are proposing construction of a 1,462 square foot two-bay Valvoline instant oil change facility on approximately 0.65 acres. We've modified the proposed building and site plan to address comments from planning the planning department and other staff. We have no objections to recommendations and conditions by city staff. As a reminder, again, Planning Commission recommended approval at their meeting on May 7. We request your approval here tonight and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Very much. We may have some questions later.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Again, the case you have before you is PUD 25-2. It's the specific site plan number one, the initial specific site plan for this PUD. Sometimes we have a second one, but with a site this small, generally, there wouldn't be a second site plan for the PUD in general. So, again, the applicant's requesting approval of a 1,400 square foot instant oil change on the 0.65 acre PUD. The project's located in northern Beaver Creek. It's just east of the intersection of Germany Lane and Colonel Glenn Highway. There was formerly a light at that location, which was removed in the last 12 months. There is a light about 220 feet east of that at Zink and Colonel Glenn Highway. This is the PUD, the current status of the site. You can see that there's a drive-through convenience store on the site, and there's a couple other smaller buildings with the associated car rental and car sales facility that goes on on the side of the activity. Sorry, I've lost that word, the activity on site. So, it's a multi-use site, and as evident from the aerial photo, it's in a challenging status as of current. As the applicant stated, the PUD was approved in April of this year, and the permitted uses within the PUD include a minor vehicle repair station, which is what they're requesting with this application. To the east is, and to the west are both used car dealership. To the north is a gas station, and then to the south is a office warehouse PUD that was approved and built over the last five or six years. Seen here is the proposed site plan. I kind of highlighted the different uses within the site plan, the proposed building in orange. You can see they're proposing entrances, full access entrances on both Colonel Glenn and Germany Lane. There is, again, two bays with the drive-through. The site includes nine parking spaces, and based on the calculation within the zoning code, they're required to have eight, so there's no concern with the number of parking spaces they show, including the 1 ADA parking space. The dumpster will be located near the center of the site, and there is a condition that requires them to construct that out of the same materials as the building. One of the conditions in approval required a requires a four-foot sidewalk along Germany Lane. You can see to the south of this site, when the office warehouse building was constructed a few years ago, they did include sidewalks on that side. We want to continue that sidewalk on both sides. And we actually received a updated site plan on Friday. I didn't get a chance to include it in your packet, but they do show that sidewalk. But that condition will still remain because the plan we referenced doesn't have the sidewalk included, so that condition number, I believe it's 20, is still in the proposed motion for your consideration. Seen here is the proposed building. They do include architectural features on four sides, all four sides with two-tone brick on the base in the middle of the building, and then a beige-colored ephesus on the top of the building. Their original proposal, where the red brick is shown, was red ephesus, so we asked them to make that more compatible with the architectural elevations in the vicinity, such as the DeBellas and the Discount Tire and the other buildings, especially that office building that's just to the south. So, they accommodated that request and proposed the building they see before you. In terms of stacking, I know this is a drive-through establishment, and in the past, we've had some challenges with drive-through facilities. If you look at a straight reading of the zoning code, based on the time it takes their business, 15 minutes to do an oil change, the numbers come out to 17 required stacking spaces. And I kind of drew this up and showed that you can, in fact, fit 17 while it's less than desirable to fit 17 on the site. They do meet that minimum standard. They did include a independent study, an independent letter from an engineer showing that based on this type of business, their actual on other locations, the most that they would have would be eight or nine at one time. And you could see that they could fit in eight before you'd ever get to that first parking area. In reality, the nature of the business, if you're going into a quick change, oil change, and you see 17 cars there, you see more than eight cars there, knowing that your wait would be over an hour or so, kind of defeats the purpose of going to that type of business. So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see cars ever stacking like this, but there is room for it in the very worst-case scenario. On their site, they do show a lot of landscaping. You can see shade and decorative trees all around the perimeter of the site and in front of the building, and then also the evergreen shrubs along the parking to the south, as well as around the perimeter of the building. And you compare that with the site as it is now, in contrast with the site to the west and to the east, the landscaping is going to really enhance the look of the building in this area and hope to be a catalyst for surrounding development should the neighbors to the east and the west decide to redevelop. In terms of signage, they show 46 square foot wall sign on each side. They have 47 feet of frontage along Colonel Glenn, so the proposed condition in the motion states that one square footage signage for each linear foot of building frontage on Colonel Glenn, so they meet that requirement. And they did show a ground sign on the site plan, but we didn't have any more details on that, so we propose a condition to limit that to five feet in height and 32 square feet per sign face with the brick base. And that's, that's what we have for DeBellas, what we have for Sonic, what we had for the other, the general retail in the area. So, so that ground sign falling in that condition would be compatible with the Colonel Glenn area. Few other conditions in the motion. One is no temporary signage should be permitted on the site, so we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, prohibited signs, along with any of the temporary signs you see with some of the, some of the businesses that we have that don't have that underlying condition. Also, given that Colonel Glenn is a pretty busy street on most any workday or weekend, there's a condition that requires any construction traffic coming through Germany Lane, and that'll help keep the stopping. There might be one instance if a truck can't make that turn, but they would need to coordinate that with the city engineer rather than coming in at any given time. This is in the impact fee district, so we calculate the amount of impact fees that are required at the permit stage if this moves forward. And if you look at the landscape plan, some of the landscaping is in the, on the south side at Colonel, or at Germany Lane is within the Beaver Creek right-of-way. We have that same thing happen with Panera and a few other places. And just to ensure that there's no confusion on whose landscaping that is, before they would, we would issue a permit, we'd want them to enter into a maintenance agreement and state that they're going to maintain the landscaping even though it's in our right-of-way, just so that there's no confusion on who's maintaining that landscaping. There are 20 conditions in the motion for your consideration. Both planning commission and planning staff do recommend approval of the applicant's request. We believe that this will be a good change to the current conditions out of Colonel Glenn and on that site right now. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public portion, council. I'll just let you speak up.
I do, Mayor. I think the proposal is a very good one. I think within that area, it really creates an automotive district with Krug sales, foreign exchange, and two gas stations. I think a lot fits there very nicely. Want to thank the applicant for the extra information on stacking. I know I asked several questions at the rezoning phase, so appreciate the extra work. I do have one question, and as a customer of the North Fairfield site, I've been able to observe a lot over a number of years, because stacking can get to eight, nine, or 10. And so, I'm not concerned. I think Mr. Burkett, your diagram was very helpful, and so I don't have any major concerns there. I think it, it all fits within the site nicely. But my question is, well, as more backdrop, virtually every drive-through type location in Beaver Creek is more popular than one thinks. I think we've seen that in a number of sites where it really can back up, especially when new. And the assertion within the packet is that there, it's a 15-minute average, and I believe that, I've witnessed that. But the hypotheticals come up. So, there's a stack of eight, both cars in the bay say, one says, I want a tire rotation, the other says, I want a transmission fluid replacement. Both take 20 minutes, maybe longer in addition to the oil change. What's your company policy? You know, if there's significant stacking, both cars in the bay have additional requests, you know, what does that look like for the men and women working on the ground? How does that, how do you deal with that, knowing that this is a location where you have Colonel Glenn, which is very busy, Germany less so, but nonetheless stacking concerns?
Happy, happy to address that question. One, one of the driving factors for the store is to help provide relief from the existing store on North Fairfield, so as you pointed out, that is part of the intent of the store, to, to help balance the demand. Also, Valvoline technicians are trained to help manage that traffic flow, so they're monitoring weight times and how many cars are in the queue, and they are trained to help manage the traffic flow so that if cars are stacking or queuing, they can go out, they tell folks how long the wait is going to be when you first pull up, and if there ever was going to be an issue or conflict with the stacking, they're trained to, you know, tell people to move on their way and ask them to come back at another time based on the services that are underway and the amount of cars in the, in the queue.
Thank you. I can go for now, Mayor. Thank you.
I, I do have one question and one comment. My question is for, I guess, the applicant. We have that entrance on the bottom there. I guess that would, I don't think that that's south, but might maybe directionally challenge. What is, yeah, I think it's.
I flipped that map, you know, that sounds like Germany Lane.
Okay. Okay. What are the thoughts with having that entrance? I understand that it would be an easier access point, so I guess my question is, why not choose one or the other instead of having two? Because I could foresee in the event that you reach that fourth double stacking point and you have someone waiting, or a couple of people waiting, at some point, there's going to be disgruntlement as to who's going in line next, how far this is going to get backed up. Was there ever any thought or consideration given to perhaps not having that entrance down there? I like to, I would like to think they're all pleasant and kind human beings, but I think that we all.
No, no, great question. That is, you know, traffic, internal circulation, access is something that's always heavily evaluated and scrutinized. And I would say that actually, it's perhaps, perhaps a bit of the inverse of the concern here. When you have two access points, that's two means of ingress and egress into the site, which actually can help with internal traffic flow. And one of the unique things with the site is, in the instance you'd pointed out, if there's a concern regarding stacking and the queue is stacking up potentially beyond where it should be, this gives somebody, this internal drive, which between the two access points, really functions as almost sort of a bailout lane where somebody can enter the site if they realize that stacking is, you know, such that they want to move on their way. They don't get stuck in the queue, they're able to just drive right through the site and exit on the other side and vice versa. So, we think that actually having ingress and egress on both streets is a benefit to help address some of the stacking concerns.
And it looks like there'll be signage there so that will prevent the double stacking on that right-hand side so that people understand that there's the ability to kind of bail out?
There will be pavement striping. You can see the arrows, yes, shown, so that you can, you understand there's two-way traffic there.
Well, I know that during our planned Beaver Creek meetings, there's so much discussion about redevelopment in Beaver Creek and, you know, the significance of it, because there isn't a lot of available land to develop, nor do I really think that a lot of that land is developable or should be developed. And so, I think that this is an excellent example of how redevelopment can occur. I drive past this site every day on my way to work. It's really, really going to make a significant change there. It's going to really brighten up that spot, and it's going to be a lot more compatible with the developments across the street. So, I just want to thank you for all the hard work, and the landscaping, I think, is just going to look incredible.
Right. We appreciate it, and yeah, we're excited for this, what we agree is an improvement to the corridor, and we're looking forward to hopefully being able to work further in Beaver Creek.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for clarifying there are only 20 conditions. As I read the, the motion, you know, and it stated 24, I scoured this thing for an hour looking for 24, but thank you for clarifying that. And also, thank you for putting in there about construction traffic only in and out on Germany Lane. So, I think that's a big deal, and it will cause a lot less of a headache on Colonel Glenn. I guess going along with this queuing and backup, there's been a lot of evidence to go along with Councilmember Doer's statement that we've had a lot of backup onto public streets, and it's happening at Seven Brew every day on, onto the access road. And so, I guess my question is, is there any language we could insert in here that prohibits the backup onto any public street?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's certainly language that we can put in, say at no time shall traffic be backed up into the public right-of-way, and that'll give us teeth if we had to intervene. I wouldn't foresee it being a problem, but you never know.
I don't really foresee it being a problem in this case. You're right. But as we've witnessed at Chick-fil-A and Seven Brew and a few others, at Dunkin', it gets out into the street.
Yeah, I wouldn't see a problem adding that as a, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be another condition. We can add another condition, but I'm not sure how we're going to enforce it.
I, if I may, Vice Mayor, as far as blocking a city street, it is already illegal and enforceable by the police department now.
Okay.
So, like with Dunkin', we gave them warnings that we would start ticketing and, you know, doing those kinds of things if they did not correct the situation, and of course, it got corrected. You are right, though, on those internal streets and stuff that are not public streets, but private access streets, yeah, they get blocked, but there would be nothing that we could do to enforce that traffic.
Well, I suppose we could address it at this stage.
Right.
During that, those times when they come up in the future.
Right.
All right, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
I had one question for the applicant. It's mainly just because of something that's happened here in Beaver Creek just recently with the Shell gas station up here with things getting into the ground, and it was diesel fuel, but what's your mitigation or disposal process for your oil?
Actually, I have a representative from Valvoline here who's probably a little better suited to answer that question, but I'm sure he is happy to, and it's a question they're, they're familiar with getting.
If you don't mind, just.
Hello, my name is Jacob Eisenhower. I'm with Valvoline LLC, 100 Valvoline Way, Lexington, Kentucky, 40509. So, as far as our, our used product, we have two tanks in the basement that will be permitted either locally through the fire department or through the state of Ohio. Those two tanks are vented to the outside of the building. We do have a black pipe cam assembly that runs to one of the access ports on the exterior of the building. A local vendor that we use throughout the Dayton and Cincinnati markets for us, they come up, pump the oil out, and evac it. With inside our dumpster there, it's a little hard to delineate. With the hatch, we do have a used oil filter bin that, then same vendor that extracts all of our oil from the pit, from the tanks downstairs, also disposes of those used oil filters as well.
And those tanks are enclosed in, there's concrete around the bottom?
Yes, so those tanks for this location, we're actually pursuing double wall on our used oil and our new product tanks as well. And then the entire pit downstairs is fully waterproofed. It's two-way. We obviously don't want groundwater getting in, and we don't want oil getting out. We do pursue these throughout Ohio, both at the state level and locally. We've done it about 30 times over the last five years, so they're very familiar with our tanks and our setup.
Yeah, I was just a question mainly because of what's happened here. I know oil is probably not as easy to get out as diesel fuel is, but it's always a possibility. I just wanted to bring that up. So, thank you very much. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the purposes of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for PUD 25-2, Valvoline, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfy the standards and criteria set forth in Section 158.066, Standards and Criteria for Specific Site Plan Approval Within the Beaver Creek Zoning Code. I further move that this motion, with all conditions below, there are 20, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 25-2, the specific site plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-10.
Ordinance 25-10, an ordinance by the city of Beaver Creek, expressing the city's intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on a one-price schedule under which electric light services shall be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting and declaring an emergency at the second reading.
And no changes to the first reading?
We can say this is a second reading, correct?
Yes. And as an emergency.
Okay. Anything else from council? A motion?
I move ordinance 25-10 as an emergency.
Second.
All right, this will require a roll call, so if you could call the roll, please.
Council? Excuse me. Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is ordinance 25-11.
Ordinance 25-11, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue and authorize inter, inter-fund transfers for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, and to amend ordinances 24-43 and 25-04.
Good to see you, Mr. Graham.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Just a couple of appropriation or budget adjustments. Do this periodically where we, we review where we stand. First item is an issue we've actually discussed in a previous meeting in that our investments now are done through, a significant number are done through bond tech, which charges us a investment fee instead of netting it against our interest income as like Star Ohio or normal bank investments. So, this item, this is something we entered into late in 2024, and so, we kind of underbudgeted what our expenses would be related to these investments, so asked for an increase of $6,500 to this account. Within the street levy, we have two requests. One was related to an accident with one of our vehicles. Insurance paid us the money to have the vehicle repaired, but we still have to pay for that repair. We had $10,000 budgeted for vehicle maintenance and repair, and obviously did not plan on something like this occurring, so we're asking for an additional $26,000 related to this pro, this accident. We received a grant from H2O Ohio Rivers. It's a chloride reduction plan, allows the street department to buy some equipment to help mitigate the salt and brine runoff into waterways or measure that. We have a street improved. We have a street improvement levy. Historically, we've paid the property taxes out of this fund. We've asked for an exemption, but rather than taking the chance of being advertised or viewed as not having paid our taxes, we went ahead and paid those. And we've asked for a, well, exemption, in which case the state would order a refund of those property taxes. The final items, cash bond. We have a number of cash bonds for different things, primarily through our planning department. But we also have fire bonds. This was just underbudgeted. Our budget for the year was $115,000. So far this year, we have spent $194,000 on just returning people's money once they have accomplished the task that we were holding the bond for.
Input from council?
I do, Mayor. Like Mr. Cussera before you, thanks for your close eye on these materials and information, much appreciated. Is the payment to Bond Tech a flat fee?
It is not. It is based on our, our investments and the return on those investments.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry, anyone else? This is an ordinance, so if there's any public comment for this, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of it.
I move a port, uh, ordinance 25-11. This is a single reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-11 in a single reading. Need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Yes. Next up, Resolution 25-10.
Resolution 25-10, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to accept a grant through the Ohio Traffic Safety Summer Holiday Enforcement Program. Shep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So the Beaver Creek Police Department applied for and received a summer holiday enforcement program grant through the Ohio Traffic Safety Office. As a grant recipient, BPD must conduct high-visibility enforcement activities in areas to impact fatal crashes by targeting occupant restraint, speed impaired driving, distracted driving, aggressive driving, priority yield, et cetera. Shep grant eligibility is for a maximum requested amount of $18,055.32 of reimbursement to the city for officer overtime and fringe benefits. There's no local match required for this grant. The grant period terminates on September 30th of '25. Staff recommends council approval for the police department to accept the summer holiday enforcement program grant.
Input from council?
I move Resolution 25-10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is Resolution 25-11.
Resolution 25-11, to authorize the Beaver Creek Police Department's acceptance of the Ohio Body worn Camera Grant Program provided by the Office of Criminal Justice Services, OCJHS.
All right, so BPD applied for and received the Body worn Camera Grant, which provides funding to, to agencies to develop, update, or expand their body camera programs and inventories. BPD began utilizing body cameras in 2017 and this grant funding will allow us to update our existing program with new cameras and equipment. The Body worn Camera Grant is for the amount of $21,522 as a reimbursement to the city. There's no local match required for this grant. Staff recommends council approval for the police department to accept this Body worn Camera Grant.
Your Honor, motion to approve 25-11.
We've got, we've got questions for you.
Got a question, yes.
Since 2017, have we updated cameras? And how many of, how much, how many, much equipment will be updated with the amount of money from the grant?
Yeah, so we've updated, this would be a partial second update. So the original cameras, we moved on from those to the second generation, basically, to where every officer has their own camera assigned to them. And docking stations, basically for the vehicles and then also for the cameras in the police department. So that's the other equipment that the camera needs. And then this will be a second upgrade into basically the third generation of cameras, which is a partial upgrade. This isn't enough to overhaul the entire inventory, but the ones that we're still using are still effective enough to where now as replacements to those and then issuing them to new officers, this will be upgrading to the next generation of cameras for that purpose. So it's also new, new transfer stations and new vehicle docks.
Do you feel like there's enough grant funding on a annual or every couple of year process to keep us up to date?
There's not for a total program overhaul. So, for example, last year we put in for, it was roughly over 80,000, or actually, we put in for over 100,000 and received 80,000. So we're able to do a lot more, get a lot more equipment with that. So it all kind of depends on what the state approves for us to have. So I think that because we have an established program and because we've been able to upgrade a couple of times, I think it'd be difficult to get complete grant funding to overhaul everything. I think they look at it in terms of which agencies have nothing versus which agencies already have an established program. So I think that impacts how much we're able to get, although we still make attempts to try to get as much as we can. It's just a matter of what they, what they approve. I think that kind of depends on what we currently have.
Thank you. I think I've asked this question before, what's the effective life of the camera?
That's probably, I'd say on average, five years.
Kind of what I thought.
And then, you know, there could be different technical issues that pop up. I think that's, that's probably a good average if, if everything goes smoothly. Now, one, one thing with the updated cameras that, obviously the technology's improved, but they also allow, like the original ones, the batteries were built into the camera. So if there are battery issues, you had to replace the whole camera. Now you can replace batteries. So things like that to where it's easier to, I guess, maintain some of that and then to do some troubleshooting on it.
Chief, I just wanna thank you. I mean, between both of the grants that we've had today, it's almost $40,000 and I hesitate to use the word free money, but money that doesn't require a match and that we are getting from the state. And so I think that that is an incredible savings for the city. And so I always appreciate your diligence in that. Thank you. A motion to approve Resolution 25-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a decision item. We need to do a board appointment for an expired term. You have anything to add?
This is, is being done due to a conflict of interest with a board member that put in his resignation. And it will be to fill an unexpired term.
For BZA, I'm sorry, yes.
Your Honor, I move to appoint Sarah Barhorse to the BZA to fill an unexpired term to February 28, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Sarah Barhorse to the BZA for the unexpired term to end February 28, 2026. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Council time. Let's start out with Vice Mayor Bales.
Oh, all right. Get my notes in order here. Hey, I just have a couple of things. I thought I'd give council an update on a golf advisory committee meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. The director of golf gave updates on the capital projects being done at the golf course. He was happy to say that the HVAC system was replacing its last unit that hadn't been replaced, so it's, it's being replaced now. And that would mean all of the units at the golf course would have been replaced reasonably recent. They're getting ready to start a cart bridge project on hole number one that will connect near the green over to the cart path. And so that'll make the pace of play a lot quicker. And that's just fantastic because that is a bottleneck right as you start the round. Their bunker project has been delayed due to weather. They are going to be completing bunkers on holes two, three, and four in the next couple of weeks, but then unfortunately, they're gonna have to come back in October to do the bunkers on 12, 13, 14, and 15. So that was something they had hoped to get done early in the golf season and enjoy it all year, but the weather delayed the projects. And then the cart path renovation on hole number 11 will start in October. So hole number 11 is the one that they're dedicating all of their funding for this year. It's a very long hole and it'll be nice to have that cart path renovated. The other thing I wanted to say is that this seems like forever ago, probably since we haven't had a meeting in a while, but Councilmember Dewar and I and, and a few of the staff attended an ODOT public meeting, the one I spoke about before, where we were able to give input on their future transportation improvement plans. And we made it very clear and evident that we were highly supportive of the US 35 and Factory Road Interchange Project as well as the I-675 Grange Hall Road Interchange Project. We took our Sharpies and drew all over the maps and we got a lot of support from the people at our table, from the moderator that was at our table, and, and then from some other folks that weren't just Beaver Creek people providing input. And then finally, I just want to thank you for the Memorial Day ceremony yesterday, thank the staff. Again, it was very nicely done and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the privilege of reading staff anniversaries, so I will do that. There are two from police. Heather Jolly, 22 years of service. Faith Lamott, 27. There are four from public service. Zach French, one. Mark Dietz, three. Robbie Maxwell, 10. And Jason Kleimer, 11. Magineering, two. Hannah Remy, two years. Will Bagley, three. And one from parks, Doug Seitner, 25 years. Quarter of a century, really very, very impressive. Thank you all for your service to our community. It's much appreciated. As Vice Mayor noted, it's been, I think, four weeks since our last regular meeting, so there are a few things here. I'll try and move fairly quickly, but shout out to Chick-fil-A and Rusty Taco. Sounds a bit strange, but they provide free meals to any student in the Beaver Creek school system that wins Student of the Month. That's just a very nice thing, dear to my heart. I think it's great to get kids out and reward them for great behavior in the classroom. Had the opportunity to pray for families at the Green County National Day of Prayer led by Mrs. Kay Bond. It was at the Collier Chapel in Xenia. Alongside Mayor and Vice Mayor, we did the ribbon cutting at the Learning Experience on North Fairfield and they really have a great setup there to provide daycare and after-school help, which as Mayor, I think, very adroitly noted, two components in the, at the state level come up regularly, one being childcare. So I think a great addition to our community. As the Vice Mayor noted, the ODOT meeting was very important and over and over again, we reiterated the importance of Factory Road at 35 and we made our voices very clear. It's a complex program being between Region 7 and 8 and there's a challenge in funding, but at least they know very heavily what we want. And I also want to thank city staff. Mr. Burkett was in attendance, Mr. Smith as well, Mrs. Jones. And so much appreciated, a lot of support there. Attended Business Links at Hilton Garden Inn. The Chamber of Commerce always puts on a nice event there. I'm thankful for their work and moving the economy forward in our community. As many of you know, I have the privilege of coaching the Blue Dragons soccer team in the VSA system. The girls had a great system, finished five, uh, season, finished five and five, but we were done and we had a great opportunity to have some ice cream, frozen custard at Rivers to end the season. So thankful for that and to be their head coach of second, third grade girls. And finally, I want to congratulate Patterson Park on 75 years within our community with Mayor and Councilman Kern. We attended that event alongside a number of local officials and congratulations to the church on 75 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littoral?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first start out with the Mayor's presentation at the memorial yesterday was great. You, you went ahead and you thanked the, the parks for the job that they did out there, but I wanna also just, again, they do such a good job. It's not just on special days. I walk by that park every day, um, regular. Excuse me, I'm having like major throat issues, so I'm not talking a lot. They, the, the park always looks perfect. It really does. They do a great job. The, I lost my train of thought. I'll just go ahead and pass. I don't feel real good.
Okay, no worries.
I'll save everybody the, the aggravation and try and understand.
No worries, you take care. So, old Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. It does feel like it's been forever since we've been here. So I just want to thank city staff and thank council for their support in sending a group of us to the DDC fly-in. We had, I would say, an incredible experience. We got a lot of presentations during the day to include discussions on foreign threats, modernizing air and space. We got a presentation on NATO coming to, coming to Dayton and all of the really cool things that the Dayton Chamber of Commerce and a lot of the planners put together. I think what was really incredible was all of the personal touches that they tried to include and tried to really incorporate small businesses. I know there's been a little bit of a, some friction with that because there are a lot of small businesses that were shut down during the NATO convention, but at the same time, there were a lot of personalized touches to include, I believe in Ice Cream Social, that was catered by Young's Dairy with a NATO flavor, a specialized NATO flavor that was created. So a lot of small businesses were able to get some recognition, but just keep in mind that those, some of the other businesses did have to close down, so try to get out and support them to try to get them back on track for losing business for almost a week. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we had another planned Beaver Creek meeting and again, incredible discussion, a lot of discussion on redevelopment. I just wanna really encourage everyone, there is a website, it's called plannedbeaver creek.com, I believe, and it has so much information on there. So if you go to our last meeting, you can actually access the PowerPoint presentation that was given. And it gives you a lot of information on the city to include what type of housing that we have, how our current density is, what it would look like if we lowered it, what it would look like if we increased the density. Just a lot of statistics about the city that I think are really important for our residents to have access to. about the city that I think are really important for our residents to have access to. The company is also working to get us additional information and to update some of the maps to make them a little more readable, so this is a work in progress. But in addition to that, I would also encourage residents to attend the open house that we're having next week. I think that Pete's going to give you a little more information on it, but it's next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at Lefino, and there you can provide your input on some of these planning and zoning changes. So really encourage residents to look at that and come out, so we know, we can hear your voices as well. That's all I've got. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Had the opportunity also, as been mentioned, to attend Business Links, and always an opportunity to meet up-and-coming businesses, people that are already in existing business giving reports. They always do a fantastic job there. Attended the Flags for Heroes Ceremony, which was on Saturday at 5:00. The chief gave a stirring speech and really emphasizing, I think, the importance of service over self, and I think it was really a good message. Also, again, to compliment the Mayor on the program, the Veterans Program that took place on Monday, a fantastic job, and the comments were just right in line with the importance of that day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Most of the things that they talked about, I was part of in some way or fashion, so I won't repeat all of those, but I did attend the Rotary Golf outing sponsored by the Beaver Creek Rotary Club, and I wanted to say that the Mayor's team won for the second time in a row. And the only common denominator between those two years is the Mayor, so. And the police are asking for a rematch. Actually, I just surround myself with really good golfers. That's what it's all about. I was able to attend my grandson's wedding. That was really a joy to go over to Indiana and be a part of that. And my great-granddaughter turned five years old last week, so I'm really excited about that. In addition to going to Patterson Park for their 75th anniversary, I went out to the Blessing of the Bikes at Kill Care. And just a little tip for drivers out there, be on the lookout for bikes, motorcyclists and that out there. My granddaughter's boyfriend was hit by a car, is still in the hospital, and may never walk the same way again because of somebody not paying attention to what they were doing. So pay attention to bikes. I was able to attend three Memorial Day services yesterday, including the one we did here, and I want to really thank Kayla Sensenbaum from the Parks and Recreation Department for what she did, getting everything put together. I kind of gave her a list of what I wanted, and she ran with it and made it all happen. And the big thing is she really got the weather right. I don't know how she did it, but I'd really like to know how she did that, because she did a great job with that. And also I want to thank Colonel Richards, Base Commander, for being our guest speaker. He did a great job, and it was a lot of people from Beaver Creek, or I'm not sure where they were all from, because I didn't get a chance to talk to all of them, but there was a lot of people. There was a really nice turnout, so it was really nice to have that. And that's all I have. Colonel, the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can't tell the secret of, that we have about getting the weather right. That's high-tech and highly classified information, so I wish we could get it right every time. Tonight, real quick, coming up, this happens real quick, so it's going to open up, actually, tomorrow, registrations for the Third Annual Citizens Academy opens tomorrow. Eight-week program that offers behind-the-scenes access to city programs, in-person classes. It will be Thursday, August 21 through October 9, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's free and open to Beaver Creek residents. Limited spots are available. We usually try to keep it 30 and under, because we're meeting many times here, we're meeting at different locations that have space capacity limitations. The two previous years, we have been booked full. If you think you know what the city does and understand from finances, police, planning and development, golf parks, fire department, township helps us out there, you really need to come and participate in this class. We have had positive feedback both years, just people are amazed at the amount of information that is provided. So please sign up. It starts tomorrow. Plan Beaver Creek, as this was mentioned, this is part of our outreach, June 5, 5:00 to 7:00, at Lefino Plaza Meeting Room on Dayton-Zenia Road. And so we're hosting this, a comprehensive update, because of the comprehensive update and city land use plan, zoning code, and property maintenance, so we want your opportunity for the citizens to have, review the current land use and identify key community issues and opportunities to talk to city staff about the project. Residents who are unable to attend can share input through the Engage tab at planbeavercreek.com. So there's going to be other opportunities, but please take every opportunity to participate. This is coming up, June 3, Community Conversations with City Council. This will be from 12:00 to 1:00 at lunchtime at the Beaver Creek Golf Club. So please come join a few city council members to ask questions, share ideas, learn more about city projects, services. Everyone is welcome. This will be in the larger room there, because we got a course, as mentioned, the golf course is very busy, but we will have plenty of space to sit down and have conversations with you. So please come out and join city council members. Summer Concert Series, this is always very popular at Dominic Lefino Park. It's on Sunday, starting June 1, so starting this coming Sunday through Sunday, July 27. So you basically run all of June and July. St. Dominic Lefino Park on Grange Hall Road now, you're going to have a variety. If you don't like country, come back the next week. You may have bluegrass. If you don't like bluegrass, come back, you may have rock, indie. I'm not even sure exactly what that is, but there are multiple versions, and I think from the feedback I've heard and the ones I've heard, it's a good time, you bring your own lawn chair or a blanket, and it's been very, very well attended. So if you want to know the concert lineup, visit beavercreechoha.gov/concert. Party on the Patio, the first one was successful that we just had, but this would be the second and last, unless we have another opportunity, but right now, this would be the second and last one, June 7, 5:00 to 9:00 at Beaver Creek. We're going to have a DJ this time, but there's a food truck from Claiborne Grill Food Truck, and some refreshing drinks from the Beaver Creek Bar. Grab your crew and soak up the sunset and dance the night away if you'd like to, or have a good time of fellowship and eating some food that may not be the healthiest for us, but they taste the best anyway. So come out and join us on Party on the Patio and experience a different side of the golf course. Another thing, Fourth of July Parade Registration. We want all to be in to the parade, but it's important that we get your application so that we can account for how many and the lineup, and so please, we encourage businesses, small groups, sometimes it's soccer teams, football teams, basketball teams, cheering teams, all kinds of different activities come out, and please join the parade. Parade application is June 15, and visit beavercreechoha.gov/FourthOfJuly to get that. We are and always will continue to encourage sponsorship for the Fourth of July as well. So any businesses or individuals out there that care about wanting, desiring to do a sponsorship, not too late, please reach out. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Now, we've reached the point for citizen comments. If anyone would like to come forward and address council on any subject, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Diana Unger, and I live at 3461 Napney Drive, 45430, so I'm a resident of this city. I am here tonight as a concerned citizen regarding the citizen-led initiative to abolish property taxes. The petition, the signature petitions are going around the state currently, and this is an effort to get on the ballot in November of this year, an amendment to the Ohio Constitution to abolish property taxes of any kind effective with the January 26 property taxes, which will be collected the year following. So I am concerned, but I'm not the only person that's concerned. There is a growing group of people statewide that are trying to make sure that local communities who would be affected by the abolishment of property taxes in a variety of ways, and the city of Beaver Creek has many facets of that. As a resident, I'm very concerned about what would be next. So I am urging council to convene discussions with the other local potentially affected entities that would affect the residents of the city of Beaver Creek. For instance, I can tell you, and I'm sure you probably all realize this, but many citizens really do not have an understanding of all the services that their property taxes provide. And as we know from the past, there's not, there has not been an appetite for a city income tax. This leaves very few alternatives when it comes to funding city services. So I took the opportunity over the weekend to pull up all the things that my family receives services from based on the property tax levies that are assessed on our property. And so I don't know that everyone is aware in our community. I recently served as the Chair of Citizens for Beaver Creek Schools. I have recently resigned from that and moving on to this particular initiative, and I would just ask that there are proactive discussions that collectively inform our voters, our residents, what is at stake here. I don't know that people realize that city police, all parks and rec, including the Senior Center, adult sports, youth sports, enrichment programs, camps, and bike trails within the city limits are affected by this. City roads, street improvements, many of the things that you've all discussed tonight, snow removal on our roads, road preparation for inclement weather. These things are often seen as just taking for granted that they're going to happen, but without the funding, then we are definitely going to have some issues. And I'm not even talking about the effect on Beaver Creek City School District, the Career Center, which has a levy for that, other county programs, township, fire, and EMS. The list is very large. I would just ask that you convene discussions with these other affected entities so we can be informed as to the effect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you would, stick around just a little bit after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you. Anyone else?
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. My comment right now is in regards to the 19 May 25 business meeting, having to do with the discussion or the minutes that Mr. Wilk alerted the council and the residents of a potential fiscal shortfall. They singled out the senior center and park programs. And not enough detail was given, but I urge great caution in targeting one of the fastest-growing demographics in our community. Seniors plus their families represent a huge voting block in our city, so that's on there. I would also plan on contacting Mr. Wilk, because he did indicate that there was an , and requests an itemized list of the proposed restricts, or reductions. And also, the monetary shortfall is added in there, because I don't mind. I'll give my opinion and recommendation, so that's on there. But that's what I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Move we adjourn, Your Honor. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.